Pushing the button?
Okay.
Six oh two.
It is just around six oh two here on January twenty first. This is a regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Oneonta and we'll call this meeting to order if the public please hold roles.
Mayor Darnick?
Here.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Here.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Here.
Councilmember McHugh?
Here.
Councilmember La Parishu?
Here.
Councilmember Carson?
Here.
Councilmember Harrington? Councilmember Forrest Roffberg? Councilmember Matheson?
Here.
All right. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you much. And those who were not with us for our first meeting of the year, you missed a great meeting. We dispensed with the here's two, here's one, here's thirty seconds, because nobody's looking at that anyway. So we get to about a minute left and approximately three minutes. I'll go like this little love tap, so you'll hear that. If you get to like three minutes and change, come down with that thing. All right? So with that, again, what you want to do, please, if you have anything you'd like to speak to council about, your name, your address, you may stay where you are sitting, standing, or take advantage of the podium. March?
Hi, I'm Mark Delmira. I'm in the four, Rain Park North in Oneonta. I've given everybody a copy of my presentation today. As I have mentioned, I'm going to start now.
Okay.
As I have mentioned on many occasions, I support the good work that RSS has known for. However, at this time, I strongly oppose the construction of any building at Twenty Seven Market Street. It is clear that we need this additional apartment. This property should always remain under tax rules. While RSS is proposing to build supportive housing at this location, I believe they should consider an alternative approach, one that has successfully been implemented in the city of Binghamton. The city of Binghamton partnered with a nonprofit organization, Greater Opportunities, to utilize state funding to renovate vacant multifamily properties into newly remodeled supportive housing units. This approach repossesses existing structures rather than constructing new buildings. So why isn't RSS interested in such a model? The answer may be lie in profitability. Renovating and managing smaller existing buildings is less financially rewarding than constructing a new twenty-five million dollar building that is funded by taxpaying public money. I have included in my letter to the editor, which was written in August, on this very subject. Please look at the last page of this presentation. Compare the salaries of RSS executives versus Greater Opportunities. It's clear that RSS prioritizes venues that maximize net income, which is essential to sustaining their salaries. Rather than considering the RSS model, I recommend that Oneonta follow Binghamton's example. In twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-three, Greater Opportunities successfully restored four vacant properties in Binghamton, resulting in the creation of twenty-seven supportive housing apartments. This project was funded through Empire State Supportive Housing Unit. By the way, this is the same funding that RSS is proposing to use for Twenty Seven Market Street. The city has a wonderful opportunity to address Oneonta's vacant properties, revitalize existing structures, and reduce neighborhood life. Because of the time constraints, I will summarize the documentation for this report. Please look at the before and after pictures on pages two through five for Muntzal Street, Moffett Avenue, Sturgis Street, and Twenty Two Way Street. These twenty-seven apartments are allocated for housing to homeless, serious mental illness, families where the head of the household has substance abuse disorder, and survivors of domestic violence, and also youth that are aging out of the system. Please note on the last page of the paper, a comparison for RSS and Greater Opportunities. Again, the city of Oneonta has an opportunity to resolve many of our pressing issues without erecting a building at Twenty Seven Market Street. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you very much, Mark. Have we? Yes, Brian?
Brian Shaw, City of Sixth North Belmont Circle. The closure of the parking garage in May of twenty twenty-three has led to a steep and troubling decline in our downtown. Two years ago, city leaders pushed to demolish the parking garage. They assured the community that they had a solid plan and that everything would work out fine. Now, nearly two years later, it is evident that demolishing the parking garage was a critical mistake. It should have been renovated as outlined in our DRI plans and Conrads' plans. Unfortunately, we clearly have not learned from our previous mistakes. The handout distributed at the January seventh council meeting, titled Urban Density, demonstrates the mayor still heading in the wrong direction, disregarding feedback from downtown businesses. At prior council meeting, council members were presented with a three-page letter from the owner of Clinton Plaza. The letter, which is included in the meeting minutes and available online, highlights vacancy and parking problems at Clinton Plaza and throughout downtown. As indicated in the letter, Clinton Plaza pays over a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year in property taxes. I figure that seems outrageous, given the property's depressed market value. The problem extends beyond Clinton Plaza. Many downtown buildings have lost value since the parking garage's demolition. The lack of community parking is not only affecting retail businesses, but also discouraging residents from living downtown. As property values are reassessed in the coming years, many downtown properties will likely experience a decrease in property taxes. Who will make up for this shortfall? The answer remains unclear. Financial gap will further be compounded by declining sales tax revenue resulting from reduced traffic and business closures. The lack of investment in downtown is becoming increasingly apparent. For example, two years ago, The Working Kitchen, a business located at One Forty-two Main Street, had plans to build a showroom, which included a significant investment from its owners. Unfortunately, those plans have been canceled, as indicated by the foreman's side now displayed in their window. As downtown continues its decline, the question arises, what does this mean for the rest of Oneonta? In the coming years, the entire city will feel the repercussions. Beyond the direct loss of property and sales tax revenue, there'll be intangible losses that are difficult to measure. A growing company looking to open an office may now reject Oneonta after seeing the state of our downtown, or a high school senior and their parents are considering college options. That is, Oneonta will be discouraged by what they see now. The most unfortunate part is that this whole situation could have been avoided. The vision that some of our city leaders are pursuing is repeatedly flawed. Unless we change course, the situation will only worsen. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Have we? Yes.
Charles Charard, Thirty-Nine-One Chestnut Street, Oneonta, New York. Steve, members of the Common Council, I have come tonight to address the urgent need for housing for our unsheltered neighbors. I am aware of some proposals that would alleviate this need. I am also aware that they are controversial. This controversy is what I want to address tonight. We need not be enemies. We are all neighbors who want to see each other grow and succeed. None of us want to see this town fail, as we all love it very deeply. I know many of you personally, both onstage and in the audience. I know so many of you have done wonderful things for this community, from revitalizing our public spaces to holding town halls, to working to combat substance abuse. It is precisely this work that gives me hope that we can come together on this issue. Furthermore, it is my belief that division, not generosity, will be what holds on Oneonta back. I come as a neighbor looking to find common ground, not as an adversary looking to gain political points or putting each other's down. I have seen firsthand what this community can do if it stands united. If we stand together against the evils of poverty, I know that better angels of our nature will prevail. But I would implore the council to create new housing as soon as possible. We will be judged as a community by how we treat the unhoused. I would also ask the council to be aware of the alternatives. A situation where the unhoused freeze in the streets would be a shame upon every Oneonta. I would also ask the council to rule out incarceration as a so-called option. Oneonta's young people do not want that. We are the future of this city, and we will be heard. So I would urge all of us, both on and off the council, to engage in discussions with our neighbors regarding the well-being of our unhoused neighbors. If you feel like you haven't been able to engage in such discussions, I can assure you that you can always talk to me. If we start shouting and start listening, I know we can find common ground. To quote Benjamin Franklin, "We must all hang together, but most assuredly we shall all hang separately."
You can hand that right to Don.
There's one for each council member, and then there should be one for the city clerk as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have we? Anybody else who would like to talk?
I apologize, this one is rather soil, but it is one for nine.
Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak to council? So, that being the case, I will say that this part of our programming is done, and we'll move on to correspondence, if there is any.
We have one.
Came in late this afternoon. It's not yet in your packets. It'll be sent. To whom this concerns? The City of Oneonta Common Council. This not only has come to my attention, but the other members of the public's attention as well, based on the following. The city of Oneonta is not doing well fiscally, ethically, or structurally in terms of whom is actually governing the city in the right direction. The city is more divided based on ideologies versus practicality. What is truth? What is fallacy? And what is moral and just versus what is unethical and idiocracy? This needs to stop immediately. To address this, there simply needs to be a community review where the residents, not the city employees, submit a review of the three major city officials, the city administrator, the city finance director, and the city attorney. A review of these three positions would give an outline of how the city is currently being governed fiscally, ethically, and structurally. The scores would be based on a zero-through-ten scale, meaning zero is poorly, and the official needs to be fired by council indefinitely. Five is the council firmly describes what the official needs to do better to improve, and ten is the official does not need to improve nor change anything. If the majority, fifty-one-plus, of the reviews of the residents feels strongly about something in their reviews, it must be taken seriously. The residents already do this with the council and mayor due to one word: elections. Please strongly take this into account and consideration. There are people whom are either threatening to leave or have already done so. The city needs to enact this. We, the residents of the city, cannot and will not be going the current spiraling, out-of-control direction. Thank you for your time and attention. John Henry Gordon Hamel, the fourth.
Thank you, John. And that's all the correspondence?
That is it.
All right, then, and we have no public hearings.
None.
None. We have them coming. Committee reports, we'll do then? Community Wellness Committee, Katie?
Yeah. First, I just want to say thank you for having the minutes in the packet, because I thought that my notes were in this notebook, but they're not. So this is very helpful. So we met on January ninth, and Councilmember Moser Campoli and I had a guest, a couple of guests, actually. We had a petitioner, who is John Hamel, who just spoke in that correspondence, who was curious about whether Senator Oberacher could attend a meeting to discuss homelessness in the city of Oneonta. We sort of said, you know, that if we were able to get a senator, the senator here, it might be valuable to his time and everyone's time to bring together, like, basically anyone who would be interested in that conversation, rather than keeping it, you know, at the Community Wellness Committee. So we'll see where that goes. We have a guest from the Utica Center for Development, Carrie Lincoln, who had been very recently, like, within twenty-four hours hired, but was great, and came and spoke with regard to what they do for the community to the best of their knowledge and what, you know, they might be doing in the future. Would you like to fill that, fill in any gaps there?
Yeah, as far as that.
Yeah, I have some notes, but I don't have it with me.
Carrie came in, you know, because Gary Flair, too, who was hired by Utica Center for Development, was ill with the flu. And so Carrie had just been hired, and that's why she stepped in, excuse me, stepped in on that. But I know that they're really looking to develop some of those services, you know, centering around case management. That's what the job that Carrie's going to be doing, especially with veterans, including homeless veterans.
Right. We also, then, we worked on the Tobacco-Free Communities Legislation. We have draft language from the Public Health Law Center, which is like a really robust model statute that we are parent down to make appropriate for Oneonta. And I would like to, we're going to continue to work on that over the next couple of meetings. I'd like to have that brought to a legislative committee for review by the spring. And then, the only other thing that I feel, oh, no, I'm sorry, two things. One is, I was hoping that we might be able to get an update on the parking situation for the Atsigo County Mental Health Employees. Committee made a formal recommendation to develop some sort of pass system so that those employees could indicate their cars and beat up for parking tickets. And then, because we all know how critical those services are at this time in our community. And then, we also will bring to a future meeting, before it gets warm again, cooling stations and how we might be able to help in the summer with some extreme heat that we are destined to have. So, and yeah, our next meeting is in February. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, no, that was exactly what I had, that we were going to come back around to cooling stations, because we talked about it at the height of the summer, you know, last year, so it was better to start earlier. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is that the annual point-in-time count, I think we talked about that?
Right, we did talk about that.
Is coming up. That is organized by Opportunities for Atsigo. They're doing that on the twenty-third, I think, starting at midnight and going for twenty-four hours. And they are looking to get an accurate count of homeless in Oneonta. Or not just Oneonta, sorry, Atsigo County on that date.
Let me address one of the questions that was unresolved, which is the county employees' parking. So we've been able to determine partnerships with some of our local folks to accommodate up to thirty-five of those, of those cars, of those individuals with cars. So they will have reserved permit parking that's not going to be impactful to the West Cut Lot or any of the other places where, obviously, that would be. So take some stress out of our, out of our parking situation because of that.
Oh, that's great. Thank you for looking into that.
Sure. And those are being negotiated right now, so when those are locked in, I'll give you more information.
Okay, got it.
Okay?
Thank you.
Is there another question that you had that was unresolved?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have questions or comments? Yes, Cecilia.
I had a constituent resident ask recently about the status of the encampments of the river. And so I just was curious, just to kind of follow up on what Elaine was mentioning, if there's been any kind of updates, given the cold weather and...
I don't have any updates about the encampments specifically, but certainly, there is code blue that's in effect. So any night that is, I have to double-check the degrees, but any night that it hits a certain temperature, if it's below that, anybody who does not have housing can present themselves at the warming station or at the homeless shelter for housing. If they can't accommodate them there, they will get a hotel room. And if they ultimately cannot accommodate with a space in a hotel room here in Atsigo County, they will find a spot for them in another county. The other thing that folks should be aware of is if folks have, like, a relative or a friend, somebody that they could, you know, connect with, to stay with, DSS can actually pay for transportation to that location. And it does not have to be within the county. It can be outside the county.
And I'll just say, it's been a couple of weeks since others down to the river, and at that point, it had been cleared out of their own, you know, volition, and cleaned up as much as anybody that should be given credit for that, Randy Mowers. So as far as I know, that encampment has to, you know, come back to being... All right. Yes, Donna?
I looked at the encampment the other day, and there was no one there.
Yeah, there was no one there, yeah.
The code blue is under thirty-two degrees.
Okay, thank you for checking.
I just wanted to say, so I had a meeting with residents this past weekend, and I was going to update you guys on some of the things that we talked about at the end of the meeting, but I feel like it's topical, so I'm going to bring something up now, which is that I know that there has been talk previously on the council of potentially restoring the idea of a public safety committee. And one of the suggestions in lieu of that would be to have regular, either at every meeting, or maybe once a month, or maybe they could alternate, the heads of our public safety departments come and just give, like, a report on the general kind of goings-on, obviously only things that they could share, whatever they felt might be valuable, just so that residents felt connected to the ongoing things in our community. And I feel like, Cecilia, your question would have been a great one to direct to, you know, someone who has, like, you know, up-to-date knowledge on that. And so I just felt like that was sort of in support of that idea. Then if there were any questions, we could, we could ask them, you know? Yeah. That's it. Humble suggestion. Thank you.
Anything further for Katie? Uh, yes, Cecilia.
I just, the reason I was asking about the encampment is that I was just, I had just read a news article about Providence, Rhode Island, recently had two city council members open up their city hall as a warming station. And so there's been quite a bit of press about it. So just as a, a news story regarding the extreme cold. City Hall did respond in Rhode Island, so I just wanted to mention that as an example.
Yeah, I haven't, I sit on a couple of the committees with folks that are engaged in addressing unsheltered, especially, you know, the concern of the cold. And it's generally the consensus that most folks that are at risk have been finding places through support or in some other fashion to be, to be kept warm. Just, we don't have anybody, to my knowledge, that has been trying to brave the cold without, you know, without support.
And that was the point about, you know, finding spots even outside the county. There is always a spot for anybody who needs, you know, a place to stay overnight. Well, it's not that, you know, we don't need other solutions, but that, you know, there are, you know, because, like I said, it could involve, you know, folks needing to leave the county, you know? The county has had to send them to other, you know, DSS, you know, agencies that have, you know, space available and affordable.
SOS has sent a number of folks to...
Yeah. So as far as, you know, talking about keeping people close to home, you know, yeah, we probably, you know, do need more solutions.
Is there anybody else who'd like to have a comment or a question of Katie before we shut down that report? And I think not, so thank you very much, Katie. We'll move on to the Legislative Committee, which is one of our busier committees these days. Lynn?
We met January thirteenth. John Hamel also came to our meeting and asked a question about the, asked about how information can move back and forth between the county board and the city council. And we, as a committee, answered his question appropriately, just explaining that the four representatives at the board are the mechanism of that to happen, so. Code enforcement officer Steve Yearley gave a PowerPoint presentation. He thought he was going to go on in ten, fifteen minutes. He ended up staying for forty-five, fifteen minutes, something like that. It was very informative on how his office works with current landowners that have rental properties, what does it take to work with them, and then ultimately, once, I think it was twice, said that it's not about revenue, it's about compliance. So just trying to get people to be compliant. So I think overall, that was very, very informative. It was a follow-up from the previous month where we had someone do a public presentation on their current situation. And so I think it was good just to hear both sides of the, of the point. We went on to the park rules, which led us to motion number thirteen, I think it is. Yes, motion number thirteen on tonight's agenda. The only thing that we changed was the word bicycle. I believe it was Katie brought that up, and we decided that having a bicycle lying next to one of the roads in the park was going to be okay. We didn't want to banish our, was it eight-year-olds, nine-year-olds?
Yeah.
So, getting tickets for their bicycles. We moved on to the nominating members of the Board of Ethics, and the city attorney is completing his review, and so we should have that for the committee by next month. And then we moved on to the very exciting preliminary procedure book that you, you still need a copy of, right?
Yeah.
Should be here today or tomorrow.
It's a very exciting read, so I'm told. No. So what we're asking for is that all eight, excuse me, nine of us, since the mayor's part of the legislative body, to have that read by the second meeting of February. And we're going to have a, we're going to have an instructive, we're going to have an instructive period with our city attorney, who typically does that before the start of each council period term, sorry.
Questions for Lynn? Lynn, I've got a quick question. No, go ahead.
Sorry, not a question, just a comment, that I did watch that meeting, and that administrative review process was very thorough, and I thought, I found it very helpful as well, for anybody who wants to catch up on that. I thought it was very informative on how that whole process goes, so.
Are we anticipating, Lynn, to my question, that training to take place within an hour?
I think we were shooting to do it from five to six, an hour prior to the meeting.
Okay, great.
Then we get an hour to get that done.
Okay. Excellent. Yes, Cecilia.
So when we meet, the purpose of the meeting would be to both review the current contents of this, as well as think about revisions for our own meetings? Is that the purpose of the meeting?
It would be for our city attorney to give his presentation. He said he needed an hour to go through what he believes is the knowledge that we need to run our meetings with more effectively and efficiently, and along with the contents of that book.
Okay. He said it's a training he typically gives to incoming council members, but Mark had shot him down to do it, and so he would like it an hour to do with us.
I will say, I sat down with him a number of months ago, and he has an outline with an orientation, he called it, and it was super helpful. It was very, again, very informative. I picked up a lot of stuff from it.
So we figured right before the meeting, like, easier than five to six.
So that would be on, like, the eighteenth, it looks like, right?
Right. So I'll just say that we may need to adjust one meeting or another time. Council meeting typically starts at six o'clock on Tuesdays. The eighteenth, I've penciled in, is the State of the City speech. At this point, it looks like it's a pretty large crowd, so we're inclined to use the atrium over at the foothills. So there's, you know, there's a little bit of a distance between the city hall and the foothills. So with this council permission, we will either move the Finance Committee up or move the council meeting back, if you guys have a preference. Do you have a preference?
Or back?
Yes.
Oh.
Like to create a half-hour space if we can.
Prep time, I think it was. I thought there was something else going on in the first council meeting on February. Maybe that's why...
Yeah, we have a few things going on in the first council meeting, but at the top, I've got the State of the City speech on the eighteenth.
Right. So right now, it's just about logistics, right?
Right, it is exactly right.
We couldn't meet down there an hour early?
We could, absolutely. We could do that, and that would solve everything. So, sure, I'll get with Jeff and just to see if we can just get an extra hour on the thing.
Okay.
Yes, Cecilia.
I just was curious if there was a conversation about revisions based upon the conversation we had at last council regarding the procedures, preliminary procedures?
We didn't get into revisions because, well, I haven't read the book yet. I think Katie's the only one here that's read it, so I think we'll have to do our homework first.
Okay, so we'll have the training and some background first, and then we can discuss.
As we're reading it, right. So we have from now till that meeting in February to read the book, which I've been told it's an easy read.
Totally. Yeah, once you get into it.
It is dense, but it's easy.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so the idea is that the, these procedures are tried and tested, and if we all have a really good understanding of them, we may find that that's sufficient. And if we decide that we don't feel like that's sufficient, after we all thoroughly understand, we can take the conversation from there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we do things that are not in the book, like friendly amendments and stuff like that. And so if we're wanting to do them, we can add it, but it's like, we all need to know.
Right. So friendly amendment. Because I heard him say that. I didn't even realize.
So I'm just thinking, we're blowing away the whole idea of, okay, being recognized parliamentarily. Ironically.
Right.
Is there anybody else with a, with a question or a comment for Lynn? All right. That said, thank you very much. Lynn, and we will move on to Cecilia, please, and the Finance and HR committee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We met last Thursday, which was the sixteenth. And the conversation, discussion was actually unusually long. And that was because the first hour was taken up with the Tyler technology presentation. And so hopefully, council members have had a chance to take a look at the presentation and, and hopefully your questions, if you have any, we can talk about them. I found the presentation to be quite straightforward. I did find Alan Ruffel's comments afterwards to be also quite useful, just on the ground, although his experience is a bit of field from what we'll be using, what the city will be using in terms of Tyler technology. Nevertheless, it was helpful to hear about his experience and the, the time period and so forth that it's taken to adapt. So that was the first chunk of the meeting. And then as you, as you see, we kind of evenly divided up to consent agenda and then to, we have a number of discussion items from our, from our meeting that I always leave to have discussion of later on.
Good. Good. Questions? Comments?
So, so we are talking about Tyler tonight, or, because I wasn't quite sure.
Oh, so the plan was that we would have the video available for council members to watch if you weren't able to attend. I think we got, I think we had one council member inside the committee who was there. And so it's available to take a look at.
But to answer your question, we're not actually having a conversation around Tyler this evening. There is in fact a, a, a future for Tyler in terms of connection to the Finance and Human Resources Committee, is there not? You expect to?
It should be in the coming weeks. And the schedule, which I have written down, is, it's a multi-process, a multi-date schedule for that. Greg, do you have the sort of details about that, or Jenny?
Well, most likely, I just, like you said, we'd like any council members to have a chance to watch the video, send any questions to, I suppose to Cecilia or myself. And we can address those at the next Finance and Human Resources meeting. At that time, we'll have an updated proposal with costs associated with the different modules that we're proposing and can continue the discussion. So at some point.
That's where I was gonna go with this, because on the presentation, it doesn't actually give the modules that we definitively want with the costs that's associated with that.
Oh, yeah. So it's forthcoming.
Right.
It's just stuff.
Right. So that's why I was asking if we're gonna have the presentation or show over the numbers at least.
So the key takeaway from me, though, is that based on the video that has been presented, it's still available online, that anybody who's got any questions to send it to the Finance and Human Resources Committee, so that that then can be passed along to Tyler. Is that right?
Yeah, absolutely. And I just mentioned that we'll be having, I believe, another conversation in the Finance Committee meeting. And then we'll take those, that conversation to come.
Right.
Yeah. And I was just coming back to my comment. I'm just a big supporter of these, you know, presentations tonight, I guess, because I watched that one and that was also very helpful and informative. So, yeah, thanks.
Okay, great. Yes, Don?
I think with respect to this issue, the council has to consider a couple of things. Efficiency on the one hand versus the cost and the implementation, which could take a long time, on the other hand. So it's a balance. And that's, that's what the council will have to consider.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So with that, I believe that we have come to the end of our reports on various committees, and we'll move on to the approval of warrants, which is motion one, that the common council approves the warrants totaling one million eight hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents, and that the same be placed on the finance director's desk where payment is presented. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Don, followed by Elaine, and we can take a vote.
Councilmember Mojer Kampoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Laparishu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. Which takes us to the consent agenda. I just wanna pull out a name of Theon Misner, who's gonna be, I'm not pulling out for lack of consideration, but just to, you know, acknowledge Theon, who will be joining the Housing Commission. And I, and I just wanna extend my heartfelt thanks to Hannah Baskin, who did a fantastic job. And I suspect on the other side of, Family should very well find herself back working within the city's committees. So, so you'll find his name and, and other things of interest that you've all looked at. And so at this point, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Elaine, followed by Don. And we'll take a vote.
Councilmember Mojer Kampoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Laparishu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. Which brings us up to our city administrators' report. And Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. As we've reported at the last meeting, we had several water main breaks that were identified. They've all since been repaired. Ford Ave was repaired last week. There is a private leak that is behind the meter at Motel Eighty-Eight on Chestnut Street. As far as we know, that hasn't yet been repaired, although it is a private leak that they'll be responsible for repairing. Also, for the weekend, we were alerted to a leak at our west-end water tank. There was a hole in the side of it that developed from a repair that had been done previously years ago and opened back up. We had that repaired yesterday, and the tank's been refilled now or in the process of. The watershed timber harvest that's been going on the last year and a half or so, I just wanted to update on that. Our gross proceeds to date are just under seven hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. Less the fifteen percent commission. It goes to our consultant on that. The net the city's received so far is just about six hundred seventy-four thousand. Those proceeds go into the community landscaping fund. We have likely three more timber sales to go. It will happen sometime this year. The amounts that we get from them will be determined at that time. So we'll, we'll update again as things move forward. The last thing I had tonight, aside from any questions you may have, is an update on sales tax. November twenty twenty-four, we received just over six hundred thousand dollars, which is about six point seven percent or thirty-seven thousand more than twenty twenty-three for that month. Twenty twenty-four through November, we've now received just over six million. That's two hundred sixteen thousand or three point seven percent more than twenty twenty-three for that same time period. You'll recall, the twenty twenty-four budget included five point four million. As we've mentioned before, we're well beyond that now. The twenty twenty-five budget includes five point eight million. Obviously, we'll be reporting this monthly or however often we receive updates and stuff like that. So what I had tonight.
That's it. Okay. Questions for Greg? Don?
I just wanted to compliment the Public Works Department. Snow removal and ice removal. You know, two weeks or more of light snow every day. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Anything else for Greg? Okay. Yes?
Greg, can you just, a little bit more about the timber sales? Those are, those figures are for this past year, or what period is that?
I'm trying to remember when we awarded that contract. I believe it was in twenty twenty-three.
Jenny, do you?
Yes. So it's been over a year. There's been a number of timber sales. We have a forester, Rod Jones, who organizes and holds those timber sales on our behalf. He marks out the trees to be removed in different areas on city property. It's all in the watershed for the most part. There has been some in our, that's all in the watershed.
Everything's so hard in the watershed.
Yeah. So there's both softwood and hardwood. We can get more details and maps as to where things were done, if you'd like to see that at some point.
Yeah. If anyone else is interested, you can read the council or if it's just me, I'll talk to whoever.
Okay. Yeah, get with me, Chris. We can.
Further? Anything for Greg? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Greg. And for my remarks, they're, they're short, but for a lot of us, they're sad. All of us that knew Val Wagner, who was our records retention clerk in the city clerk's office. She passed away unexpectedly last week. Val, if you, if you knew Val, she was a valued and beloved member of the city hall team for more than twenty years. David Currie provided me with this information, which I'm sure you knew, but I didn't want to bother you with this, that Val was initially hired in code enforcement as a clerk back in early two thousand and two. That's back when Pete Friedman was the code enforcement officer. And so Pete made that initial hire. So if you're watching, Pete, thank you from everybody here at city hall for, for bringing Val to us. She moved to the clerk's office that December, was promoted to records retention clerk in two thousand and seven, which is a title that she held on to for the remainder of her career. And now Greg, with your permission, I wanna just read from your notice to council and city staff, because I really can't improve upon it. Greg wrote, "Without question, Val was one of the most well-liked and easily-heard team members across our city government. Val brought positive energy and caring approach to everything she did. She gave great advice to those who asked and to those who walked by, never hesitating to offer the lessons of her life and experience to others. We are heavy-hearted that such a great person has been taken away from us too soon, and she will be deeply missed by many family, friends, and coworkers. And that's an absolute fact. In recognition and respect for her service to our constituents, I would ask you all, please, to join me in a moment of Thank you, folks. Thank you very much. And with that, so here's what we're going to do. We have any number of weakening bladders around our, our dais these days, myself included. And we have had some long council meetings. So I'm going to be initiating, as of this meeting, a, a strategy by where we look at the clock. If we're done with my remarks, we'll wait till my remarks, and we'll take a five-minute break for, not a, not a coffee break, but a five-minute break for the restroom. And if we are somehow miraculously half an hour ahead of things, we might just look for the clock to hit seven o'clock. But I think in this moment, it's close enough, that if anybody would like to take a short break for five minutes, again, not a coffee break, it's thirteen, what is it, seventeen minutes to, to seven o'clock? And so at twelve minutes, we're right back here, okay? All right. Thank you.
Six million.
Yeah. Back in session. Thank you very much for, all of you that have returned. Still one or two in their way. And we'll move on to the discussion agenda. All right. With motion number thirteen.
Lynn's in here. Yeah, this is from, this is right.
Lynn will find his way here. We have, we have six here right now.
And neither's.
Motion number thirteen, that the common council approves an ordinance modifying chapter one nine four of the city of Oneonta municipal code entitled Parks and Recreation. This ordinance was laid electronically on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and updates language relevant to the rules in the city's parks. Do I have a motion to approve? Scott, followed by Shannon. And discussion? Is there any discussion on this topic? Okay. All right. Yes, we will, one council member short, but we will take a vote.
Councilmember Mojer Kampoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Laparishu? Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All righty. So we'll give it another second before I read motion number fourteen.
You can't go back, so.
I'm not. I'm sorry.
Okay. Rule was. Okay, rule is called, you can't.
Yeah, no, I get that. All right, just being nice. All right, motion number 14, that the common council approves the revised 2025 Department of Public Works organizational chart and staffing plan for the DPW administration, engineering parks, buildings and grounds, streets, and water and sewer divisions as presented. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Lynn, I've got Mike, and discussion on this? Yes.
So I, I asked, we agreed as a committee to move this to the discussion agenda, just to give the council an opportunity to look at the staffing plan for DPW. There were a series of them, and then if there were any questions, we could ask the director.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, Len?
Chris, can you just walk us through this? Because I read this, reread this, and then I looked at the organizational charts. It looks like a small shift.
So basically, there isn't going to be any new employees added to the.
Right, we're just taking a G I S technician and moving into an engineer. I'm assuming she's qualified?
She is qualified. So she's going from an engineering technician to an engineering technician, which will allow her to be supervisory over, you know, interns or summer workers that come and work for us. And what we're doing is we're, as you may know, we're having discussions with the town to do an intermunicipal agreement for G I S and G P S services, geographic information systems, and global positioning system services, where the town will pay us and agree upon a fee to provide those services. So basically, we're already doing that for ourselves, which is locating sanitary manholes, sanitary sewer systems, water system piping, hydrants, valves, signage, trees, storm sewer systems, multiple various infrastructure items that we are already doing. We just do the same thing for the town with no anticipated completions, just an ongoing thing, updating their inventory. They have no one doing it now, and we have the expertise in-house, we have the software in-house, and it makes it feel like a good joint venture that we can do with the town.
Anybody else have, yes, Mike?
I just wanted to add, the presentation you guys had, the finance committee was excellent. So Len, he wanted to.
Check, watch.
But specifically, I wanted to just commence that, the plan of working with, with students for the engineering, that's a great opportunity for us and for them, so, thank you.
We do, SUCO does have a geographic information system program, and we'd be looking to hire on maybe two students a year. We have enough equipment that we can, you know, have one person maybe doing data collection out of field with our G P S equipment, and one person doing post-processing and creating maps in-house with direction from our senior engineering technician.
Yes.
I just wanted to bring up a point that I had asked during our committee discussion, and that is that the sum that the city would charge the town is still to be discussed, correct? And is there a timeline for that fee that would be?
Not specifically, I mean, we're in those discussions, the town expressed interest in coming to City Hall sometime to have a little demo of what exactly they would ultimately be getting out of it, just to see it, visualize it, so we're going to arrange that in the next couple of weeks, I imagine, sometime in February, hopefully we'll be able to come forward with a proposal, an actual intermunicipal agreement for both the town to vote on and the city to vote on, and the amount is, you know, still to be negotiated and determined, but we're looking to base it, you know, on the city's costs to provide the service, cover those.
And so cost of employees, my time, our senior engineering technician's time, students that we end up having, you know, paid internships, software costs, things like that, of that nature.
Thank you.
Yes, Don.
If you want to move on to the other departments?
Let me just let Don, no, you're all good, let me just let Don.
I had a more general question, wait till after you go.
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Okay. So the other crew that we're looking to do a revision to is the park building grounds crew. Correct. So basically, what we're looking to do.
Let's try to create two work crews.
That's correct. So I want to add a working supervisor. So we'd have two working supervisors for the nine full-time staff. So we have our administrative supervisor, two working supervisors, and everyone else would be maintenance workers, or custodial, or laborers. Basically, just split the crew in half, where four of them would go and do one set of work, the other four would go and do another set of work. We have been discussing with the crew about doing four tendies, where half the crew would do Monday through Thursday, the other half would do Tuesday through Friday. The day would start out at five AM in the morning, day would end at 3:30 AM in the afternoon. Everyone would start off with cleaning immediately first thing in the morning, so we get all our buildings, the city hall, public safety building, the H R building, burner building, any bathrooms that are open in the parks, they'll all be cleaned first thing before, and then all getting completed before 8:00 AM, when staff, regular staff comes in at normal hours. Then once the cleaning's complete, then they would direct focus on, half the crew would focus on, you know, mowing, weeding, addressing park needs, and then the other half would work on, say, projects such as, you know, carpentry projects or renovations that they may be doing. And that's kind of the more, having the two crews and taking that approach.
Go ahead, Len.
And then the legacy cost, the small shift or increase of funds, are you anticipating that that number's going to go north in future years?
The changes are already budgeted in 2025 budget.
So that shift is going, that's going to stay basically at that level?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Don.
I wanted to ask you about the change in the work week, moving from a five-day work week to a four-day work week. I don't understand how that's more efficient or beneficial to the city.
So it's very beneficial, because instead of having an eight-hour day, we have a 10-hour day, and there are projects that they can't get completed in an eight-hour day. Having a 10-hour day will allow them to complete those projects. It's been very successful on the streets and water sewer crew, I believe, Central Garage is on the four-ten spread, I understand that's been successful there. So it's going to help us get more work done, having these extended hours, and it'll give the guys a little more time off, the crew a little more time off, puts a benefit to them as well. Greg, I think, anything you want to add to that?
That's the gist of it, yeah.
Hi, Katie. I just wanted to ask if any consideration had been given to rather than Tuesday to Friday, maybe doing Wednesday through Saturday, since there's like, a lot generally that I feel like we're calling on that particular crew to do over the weekend. We talk about, you know, things in the parks and stuff, and how it's not possible because nobody's there over the weekend, or like events when they have to come in and set up the, you know, Damascus Field restrooms or whatever prior to the Fourth of July, so I'm just wondering, like, if that would work, if any thought has been given to that?
The issue with that is you would require someone working all the time on a Saturday. It would be, that would be their shift, and I can tell you, we'd get pushback from employees on that. The way it works right now, they are on call, if an issue arises, the person that's renting the facility, be it a pavilion, or the parks, you know, ball field, soccer field, or being, they call the on-call number, and the employee comes in and addresses whatever issue may be at hand. We also have people that volunteer for like street closures and things like that, it's also done by streets and park staff, bathroom cleanings. I think that would, definitely would affect morale, having to require people working on a regular basis on Saturday.
Jenny, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to point out that that would be required negotiation for scheduling stuff like.
Gotcha. So will the four-day weeks also require negotiation?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right now, it's a pilot program that was approved for just the streets and water sewer and central garage crews, so this would have to be added to that.
Right. Okay. I mean, I think that, I'm sorry, just to finish my thought, I think it would be, I don't know, obviously you understand the morale of your crew, but I think we worth at least bringing up, just because I know that being on call, I'm sure they have received like additional compensation for being on call, so maybe that's why it's okay, but I know that, you know, if you plan something, but you're on call, and then you get called in, it's also not great, you know, in terms of having work-life balance, so knowing that your three days off are Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and you won't have to go in at all, you know, I think there's some benefit to that as well.
So the on-calls are okayed, it's not the same person every single weekend?
Right.
They're paid a dollar an hour for every hour they're on call, that's on weekends and outside of normal work hours during Monday through Friday, and then any kind of call-in, even if they're called in for just a 15-minute task, they're paid minimum of $3, you know, it's all per the C S E A contract.
Okay. Don, you had something?
Well, I still think, you know, the standard work week is Monday through Friday, and I don't see the benefit to the city going to a four-day work week.
Yes, Scott.
I do, because we're able to retain staff, which we haven't been able to do on that one. But on the separate note, on with, Saturday's great, do we have any data about how much we have increased, because we've been trying to push people to do their runs and all that to the park, any data on how much overtime we've been running to try to bring people in to do, to do that?
We, we can, actually, we talked about, Jenny and I, doing an overtime report for all of 2024 at one of the upcoming finance meetings, we could do that, and then kind of look at that.
I just think it'd be, I mean, if we're going to look at four-hour shifts, the four-10-hour shifts and stuff like that, I think we should just like a whole, especially in the parks, because we're trying to increase our usage of the parks. And I think that has to bear a little bit of weight, where I understand where Chris and staff are coming from, you know, not saying how many people here on a Saturday, I think if we can give them a weekend, we give them a weekend, but maybe during the summer, we might have to alter it somewhere where we have some type of coverage for a couple hours versus right on the overtime system, the page, you know, even if that was maybe a rotating, whatever, just something to look into if we're going to have to go and try to maybe, and maybe approach them and see if they have any ideas on how we might be able to be more efficient on a weekend, you know.
During the summer.
During the summer. Because like, because we did try to push everything to the parks, the way of the run, probably invested all that money into that, and have the five Ks in there and stuff like that, so, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing too is like street closures and stuff, like most of these things, these quality-of-life things that we are, depending on these crews who are happening on these when they can't, when they're contractually not, you know, at work, which is not, it's just not, it just doesn't feel like a good use of everyone's time, because then we're calling them back in and they're working more, you know, so, and even though they're being paid overtime, it just seems like, and I get it, I'm with you, like, I think for sure four-ten's, I would rather work a four-ten, if you're listening, employer. But, but, so I'm totally, totally behind that, and I just think, you know, if we can spread it out so that there's a little bit more weekend coverage, that that would just be, I think, a good use of, of the time and the facilities.
Scott.
Just to follow, because we have to bring somebody in to do garbage on Saturday anyway, right? So we already kind of scheduled during the summer, somebody to come in to do the garbage on Saturday.
If I recall correctly, it's only two times, so each person is coming, the two people that come in on the weekend, both Saturday and Sunday, and they only have a rotation twice a summer.
Okay.
And so once they do their two times, that's it for the year.
Yeah.
Well.
Maybe there's, maybe there's a way to alternate, rotate, you know, so that they still get the rotation, but that we still have the coverage on weekends when it's needed.
I can tell you that they like continuity, like the, you know, on-call or snow and ice, they just like to have, know that their time's the same, it's not constantly changing, they like uniformity.
That comes down to like, we have baseball games on Saturday with the collegiate league, so we have to have coverage for that. I know that's not every Saturday that they have a home game. I was just trying to figure out, and I want them to have the say, I don't think it's my say, the city's saying, you're going to do this right now. I want them to have the say, but I want them to understand where we're coming from, is we're trying to push more and more to the parks, and we're trying to build Oneonta up to, we want you here, we're friendly, we're going to offer you stuff to do, we want to retain people here, because we keep preaching that, and I think we have to find a happy medium, even with our employees of, you know, well, it may not be the best thing, but during the summer, we might have to alter this a little bit. But they know better than I do, because they work, I don't.
Greg, I'm assuming this can be discussed on that, C S E A.
Right, right, no, as Jenny mentioned, all of this has to be negotiated, if we're changing the regular work schedule, so it's all part of the discussion we can have with C S E A.
Well, I just want them to, I want them to know, I'm not telling them they're going to do this, I just don't want that to be misconstrued, what's the question that I was asking.
Folks, have you seen this?
Do you want to evaluate comparing our time overtime compared to what it would be if they had a set hackwork on a Saturday?
So we have this motion in front of us, the chart and staffing plan for DPW, and the question is whether or not this is something that the council wants to approve, and is there any more discussion on this? If not, I think we can hold the call.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember La Parishu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Takes us to motion number 15, that the common council approves the revised 2025 Oneonta Public Transit Organizational Chart and Staffing Plan as presented. Do I have a motion to approve? I have Lynn, followed by Lynn, and discussion? Len?
So I just had a conversation with our department head about this, I had concerns about the structure of the chart, and then the costs that are involved, because based on our financial director's projections of what's going to happen in 2026, I just don't want to increase our legacy costs, if that's what's going to happen. So David kind of gave me the Reader's Digest version that we're trying to obtain more ridership and his plan on how to make that happen, but just based on how this report was written, it sounded more like the structure was doing his job, and he clarified that for me, so I guess for me, I'll be, I'll be saying yes to this organizational change, but again, I have concerns, and I know David's heard me of where we're headed for 2026.
Further discussion? Katie?
Yes, would you be so correct as to share with us your take on this? Because I was at the Finance HR Committee meeting, and the question that I walked away with was, the city administrator had mentioned that this wouldn't be adding a body, but then also in that discussion, I heard that you spent a lot of time driving a bus, which I believe, because I know it's hard to get bus drivers. And so I still don't understand fully how if we're not adding a bus driver, we're getting you out from behind the wheel. So I was hoping that you could help me understand that.
All right, let me try to explain this again.
Okay. We had a practice run, first draft.
Do it fast. So what we're trying to do is to move the organizational chart, so there's more straight line, not a box. The person would be overseeing the drivers. I have not been in a bus recently.
Okay.
Which is good, we are increasing our driver numbers, with thanks to the person we're discussing in the E L B T, as the Entry FLOW Driver Training Program, they've been running for me. It's actually helped DPW immensely as well. We put 10 people through it in the last eight months, six of them, or I think five or six of them were DPW employees that they were able to retain, and we've had new hires that we've actually, are on the road. This person would be more doing the day-to-day stuff than I do, as far as overseeing staff, running to the problems, you know, fixing the day-to-day stuff, where I would have more time to do the long-term goals, working on contracts, working with other vendors, working at, without getting too much into what we're trying to do, because I'm not at that point to discuss that yet, but working to increase ridership. I'm not at that point to discuss that yet, but working to increase ridership without increasing buses and employees.
Okay.
So we are working at things that are leading towards that. We are part of a, uh, it's a study that the county was awarded a hundred thousand dollars for a micro-transit study, and it encompasses the whole county, including Oniata. So we're working with them for, on that, and it takes a lot of time to deal those things. And when I'm driving a bus or working in, it just doesn't happen when you're frank.
Okay, thank you.
Don?
I understand what you're trying to do, and I essentially support it, but my concern always is that if more money goes to management or the bureaucracy, I would like to redirect it more to the bus drivers. And because after all, that's, that's the job that we do, we drive people around in buses. So I accept what you have to say, that it's important that we add this, but overall, my general outlook on life is the emphasis should be on the people who actually drive the buses. So, you know, I'm not gonna vote no on this, but I think going forward, that's what we should have our, an emphasis on.
Thank you, Don. Anybody else? Take a vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Laparishu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. Takes us to motion number sixteen, that the common council establishes the title of transit supervisor subject to all civil service requirements allocated to the administrative personnel manual, grade A three, with a standard workday of eight hours. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Don, followed by Cecilia, and discussion. Have we, yes, Cecilia?
I just wanted to clarify, so that, excuse me, that the transit supervisor position would then be filled by a new hire? I just wasn't reading that.
No.
This is, this is someone in-house as well. And because I'm not sure, yeah, okay, so it would be somebody pre-existing, okay. That was my one question, thank you.
It's not adding, it's not adding.
Right.
A position.
It's just a reconfiguration, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Have we further discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Laparishu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Motion number sixteen, transit supervisor.
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Taking us to motion number seventeen, that the common council approves the addition to the city of Oniata fee schedule of an administrative fee for unnecessary alarms in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars per occurrence, as required by City Code, Chapter two eighty, effective January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve? Lynn, followed by Cecilia, and discussion. Lynn?
I didn't find where we had some analysis on this. How many, how many of these calls are we doing a year for the last five years?
So we had actually an extensive discussion in the committee meeting with Stephen Yearley. Stephen's not here tonight. So that kind of information, I don't know if Greg could provide it at all, or if there would be additional.
Unfortunately, I don't have that information.
Yeah. The, the data that I recall Stephen talking about, and we'd have to go back to the committee meeting video to take a look, but I do recall that Stephen mentioned that the extent of calls has actually decreased quite dramatically with this, the, the threat of these fees. And so there has been a change. So I'm not sure, you know, I don't have the, the same amount of data with me as he would have, but I do recall that from our conversation, and I was, maybe Scott or Don recall anything?
I don't remember the number.
The data, yeah.
He said, he said sometimes seven calls per day.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, one of the fraternities, but that was, he didn't give like an overall call.
He didn't have an overall number.
Number.
But that they, he did remark multiple times that the number of calls has actually decreased with the, with the threat.
And then, did you discuss the reason why we were choosing a monetary amount higher than what FEMA recommends?
We did talk about that.
He said that NFPA, do you want me to answer?
Yes. Do you, I think, does the discussion follow that you recommended increasing?
No, I, I wanted to decrease because I think we're starting too high.
Okay.
Um, but he said that he went off of the NFPA recommendation for he run out of a fire truck, is how he described it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that was right around the three fifty mark. And that's what he was recommending to, to start.
I believe, just to clarify, I think he was looking at the FEMA equipment rates for the fire engine that would go respond to an alarm like this, as well as the salaries of the employees that would respond for personnel. And I think he factored in something for an administrative, you know, management oversight, that kind of thing as well. Last year, when we talked about this, when the council originally adopted the ordinance to create this section in our code, but the reason we're back here now is because we never actually established the fee. But when that discussion happened, it was, I think at that time, he came up with three hundred dollars, and then the series, based on the conversation at FARS, he was recommending increasing it by fifty dollars, just given the salaries have increased, and it's another year later.
And this is starting right out of the gate? So on nuisance call number one, you're going right to here?
No, this is in accordance with the legislation, which I believe is after three, it's a matter of six months. I have to read that to be absolutely certain of that, but it's not the first violation.
Okay.
This wouldn't change the ordinance at all, of course, just saying the fee.
Sorry, I should have read, chapter two.
That's okay, it's been a year.
I thought it was the third call, the third call you get charged.
In six months, period.
Mike, will you?
And I, Scott, I know you in the finance community, you express concern both about the amount, but also about the town not, but that, we would be assessing this, this on people within our, within the city, but the department serves the town, and I guess there's some conversation with the town, but there's no, nothing immediate as far as whether we, whether they would agree to our fee structure?
We're in a contractual agreement with the town of Oniata, so that would be addressed through the contract, so.
So not until the contract was meant to be?
Correct. Yeah.
No, there's not the pass a code over there. No, it's not in the contract, not the pass a code. For use its alarm, so.
Yes.
Good luck with that. I know, that's what I said, and that's why, that's one of the issues I have. But my issue with this was, I think we're starting out too high. I think it's easier to ramp it up, but you'll never be able to go back. And I don't, you know, and I understand where he's coming from, and we're already starting to get the compliance, and that's what we want, is the compliance. I hear this in Board of Public Service all the time. Like, I sit where Alene sits, and the finger gets pointed at me all the time saying, we don't set these amounts, they do. The finger keeps getting pointed at me as the council. And I think that instead of starting off high to begin with, you start it off a little bit lower, and then you can ramp it up, you can ramp it up. It's just, you know, I just, I think starting out at a high rate is not going to accomplish what you think it's going to, and I think it's gonna also lead to other concerns going down the road of, you know. And, and I also, but that's, that's, that's that concern over the money. If I was gonna talk about a different concern, is I have a concern how we address it in the code, that it's per, per a parcel. So you could have twenty buildings on a parcel, each one has its own physical address on there. So if you have, you know, one, one alarm in twenty-five buildings, and you have like three in just that one day, but they're all different buildings, I don't think that that's a comprehensive way of looking at things. I think that's an issue to look at.
Lynn?
So maybe this is an opportunity that the legislative committee could discuss this ordinance, Chapter two eight, and flesh this out a little bit more, and then we could throw it back to finance, and you could come up with a schedule.
Yeah, I just, because I just see me at the Board of Public Service, I listen to what they're saying at the Board of Public Service. It's, all the fees are just too high, they're just too high, we don't have any, any wriggle room in them to even help anybody out, and.
Right. If it's not about revenue generation, then it shouldn't be about compliance.
But they're also getting two call, they're getting the, they're getting fire responding, right? They're getting staff that's responding, like forbid that, like, like hopefully there's no other emergency, right, at that time. They're getting that twice before they get charged. Like, how many times do we need to have them dispatched to you before you stop making the same mistake or correct the mistake within a sixth, the bridge is on in six months. After six months, it resets, you can have two more mistakes before you get charged something. But like, if they're not covering the cost, then we're covering the cost for them to make these mistakes.
Hold on.
So the timing that I'm reading is two or more unnecessary alarms in a forty-eight-hour period, three or more in a seven-day period, and four or more in one calendar year. So it kind of is that stepping up, it sounds like, of, you know, it could be a short time with multiple or, you know, counting more of them over time. For clarification.
Mike?
Um, I, when you discuss what the right fee would be, I would encourage you to think about, uh, step up the, so that, you know, what the first violation, the first violation that occurs a fee, whatever that's, or that's the second forty-eight dollars, or the third in a week, have a, a lower fee, I'm just gonna give numbers, but you know, a hundred, two hundred, and then step it up to, you know, if you have a repeat first property that's not fixing their problem, then, yeah, then we can give them, make sure they're paying our full costs, whatever those are.
Right.
The second concern I have, though, is whether we need to distinguish between problems that are due to technical reasons. For example, when we met with our chief map, he told us that one of the colleges had a problem where their smoke detectors were placed, installed too close to their showers, so their showers were continually triggering alarms.
That's not true. I know, I know that college, and I'm gonna tell you what it is. Those detectors are put where they have to be by code. So those get triggered because the steam comes out when you open up the door, but by code, you cannot move them.
Okay.
That's what goes there, but you cannot get that through their heads.
Okay. So, so, but my, my point was different that between a technical issue versus, our chief also told us about, you know, frequent flyers, people who have like minor medical problems, who they end up calling nine-one-one and getting calls, and it's, they don't actually need an ambulance, but that somehow, I would hate to be, you know, charging some elderly person who thought they were having like a heart attack for fifty dollars because they kept thinking they were having a heart attack. We have to figure out some other solution to that.
Scott?
But my, my other thing is with this too, is I'm not against putting a fee up. I, I want compliance too. I don't think that we should have to, um, keep calling in all this overtime. But as we've heard during the budget, your most costly things are your emergency services, and we know this. And we pay people to be here to run calls. Or they want to go to a false alarm, or not go to a false alarm, we pay them to do this. This is, we already know that this is part of the job. And my other big holdup was when the fire chief sat right there and said, this is the way he can fund some of his raise, was right off of these calls. And I don't think that that's a good, now all of a sudden, after we vote that raise through, now all of a sudden, here it is, now you're getting three hundred and fifty bucks. I think let's start low. We can always ramp it up. That, that was just my, my opinion, and that's, so.
Don?
But it's something that we need to.
Don?
Scott, are you recommending that we table this and it goes back to committee?
I'm okay with that.
Wasn't this agreed to be a thing prior to even when I started council, that this would be a fee? So this doesn't really have anything to do with the chief?
But the amount wasn't agreed.
The fees pay, yeah. That's what we're just saying. Yeah.
Yeah, they also suspended it for a year to give everybody, to do mass mailings and stuff, and tell everybody we're going to do this. Now, we didn't have a fee on there, so now all of a sudden, it's, so.
Lynn?
Yeah, Mayor, I would just like to ask for an opportunity for the legislative committee to take a look at this ordinance. I mean, we could pass this thing tonight, but I think Scott brings up a really good point, is that you have, we have landowners that have multiple buildings on one physical parcel, and they shouldn't be penalized aggregately for the nuisance call. So if you have four or five buildings and you, what was that, one or two in seven days? Is that what it was?
One and two in a forty-eight hour period.
Oh, I'm sorry, on this, yes. It was two or more in a forty-eight hour period. Three or more, seven day period.
Four or five buildings, you could, you could tax that out relatively quick. So maybe that's an opportunity that we could.
So Lynn, are you making a motion to table, or what are we doing?
I think, I don't know, I don't think we need a motion for the legislative committee to take a look at this ordinance. I think we just raise it ourselves.
I'll still need to vote on this motion, though.
Fees are.
Um, I'm sorry, Alene.
I think, I think the question that I had came up, you know, really with what Scott brought up about the difference between how this is implemented in the city and the town, you know, and until he brought that up, I wasn't aware of that. And I guess I want to know more about how that's implemented here, um, before we make a decision.
So I'll make a motion to table this.
Are you making a motion to table?
Yeah.
Do we have it?
I'll second.
Second.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Laparishu?
Sure.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right. So that'll move to the legislative committee for conversation, discussion. Some sort of proposal. Um, motion number eighteen, that the common council authorizes the funding for the purchase of one thousand two hundred and seven streetlight control nodes pursuant to the city's contract with New York Power Authority, NIPA, at a total cost of one hundred fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars to be inventoried for future replacement upon failure of existing streetlight control nodes funded by the general fund, with expenditures incurred as those nodes are installed. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Don, I've got Alene, and discussion. Yes, Don?
If it's okay with the council, I think we should explain what this is, because it's a, a little bit complicated and it's expensive.
Sure. So we have nodes on every single light in the city. The nodes are about eight big, set up for light, and they are what communicate the lights between the system that we use and the computers to regulate the, um, lights themselves. So it's how we dim the lights, how to turn lights on and off. It's how we assess whether we have an issue with the light, if it's turning on or not. It tells us how many watts and voltages are being used for lights. And so without those nodes, we are unable to provide those functions. We won't be able to dim the lights, turn the lights off, assess whether there's an issue. So if we eliminate the nodes and we don't replace them, um, we lose that flexibility, then we rely on people calling in that lights are out, or we rely on people, our guys, that they plow at night, or other things that they may come in at night for, to see that the lights are not working. Um, so Quintella's going out of business, that's the light node that we currently have, or they're not in the business of making nodes. And so, um, we had a ten-year warranty on the nodes that we have in place now. They will not be able to, um, honor that warranty. Um, NIPA, New York Power Authority, is considering a potential litigation with the company. I can't really speak on behalf of that, but, um, so I, you know, there's no, there's no recourse for us to take against Quintella. So the option that NIPA's offered us is this, um, providing signify, letting nodes. And right now, the best option we feel that we have right now is there, we purchased all the nodes now, so all one thousand two hundred and seven nodes now, at the price of ninety-five dollars each, which is a hundred fourteen, hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and then we install them as the Quintella nodes fail. Um, they estimate three percent of failure nodes fail, um they estimate three percent will fail a year, um and then the warranty will begin when they're um installed, so it's a ten-year warranty, and they told us today that they have a twenty-five year life expectancy, um so it may be a while before we have to purchase any other nodes outside of this uh purchase here, there is no guarantee that Signify won't go out of business, uh so we could be faced with this another year or two down the road, and I'm saying that is the case, but it is a potential, very slightly potential happening, um but uh I think we've negotiated the best thing that we can get, and originally they were offering us a five-year warranty for eighty-five dollars per node, we got a ten-year warranty for ninety-five dollars per node, um again, another option is not doing anything, a third option they offered us was that we purchased the nodes as they fail for a price of a hundred and fifty dollars per node, with the price increasing every year based on inflation rates, so that would be a significantly more costly venture. Jenny, do you want to talk about the, how we're putting them in stock and how that would affect finances?
It wouldn't hit the expenses at this time, it would be an inventory item, so it would go around the balance sheet, and then as the nodes are installed, we would recognize the expenditure for whatever nodes, of course, we're notifying uh how many nodes that you, they install, I would then take it out of the inventory and expend it to the streetlighting expenditure, which would be in the normal course of business.
The other thing I want to add is, the whole purpose for having these nodes was related to control the lights, um there are areas in the city where landowners may not want full capacity of lighting, I've had a few landowners in the city request that we dim the lights, which we have done, um there is also a potential cost savings, not that the lights have been in operation for a few years, we could slowly dim the lights, maybe five or ten percent here and there, and then um negotiate with a nice thing to reduce our lighting fee, because right now it's based on a flat rate, so if we dim the lights, if we're able to dim the lights, and everyone in the city is uh satisfied with the lighting, we could potentially negotiate a reduction in our electricity cost for those lights.
Cecilia?
I was just gonna mention, based on our conversation in the finance meeting, that the inclusion of that ten-year warranty seems like it's a really optimal um contract.
Yes.
Yeah.
Done.
If I could summarize, that, that the current supplier is not supplying the uh parts anymore, and this is the best deal we can get to replace them.
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
So if I understood correctly, the, those current parts though may have decades of, I mean, some of them may start to fail now, but may have decades of service, right?
That's correct, so ten years from now, if one fails, and we put one of these new Signify um nodes in, that will have another ten-year warranty from that point of being commissioned.
Is there a specific reason to get the same number of nodes as we have streetlights? I mean, in a way it makes logical sense, but it also, if we have, we're talking ten to twenty-five years, maybe it doesn't matter exactly?
I think the best option is to purchase all of them right now, so we have them all on and in stock, and available to replace if the needs become necessary.
And do we have the capacity for storage of twelve hundred of these things?
We do.
Len?
Is there a limited supplier of these nodes?
So when they did this original um lighting project with all the municipalities across the state, I think they said there were twenty-five other municipalities that had the same nodes that we do, so we are not the only municipality that's faced with this issue, um Signify and Quintella are the only ones that um nodes that were offered as part of those projects, so there are fifty to sixty other municipalities out there that had the option of Quintella versus Signify, fifty percent of us lost out. I do not know of any other nodes.
Scott?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Len.
Yeah, 'cause I, I use a company for our digital boards, it's called Outdoor Link, so we have remote control of our ability to turn the boards on and off, but they, I'm just reading, they do um parks, rec, commercial spaces, it's all tailored industries in lighting solutions, so I didn't know if you had talked to them or not, but I've been using them for.
This is not something that I negotiate, this is something that New York Power Authority negotiates on our behalf.
Oh, okay, so you're limited.
I'm, 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 I'm limited to the options that they offer us.
Okay, that's what I was originally leading off with, sorry.
That's right. All right, well, it appears that our discussion is ended, let's take a vote.
Councilmember Moser Kempoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walshusa?
Aye.
Councilmember McKeel?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Okay.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
Okay, terrific.
I'm gonna, I'm going to look up my thesaurus next week and um help Kate with new, new ways of saying yes.
All right.
And no, and no, I'll be equal, you never know.
That's right.
Okay, so moving on to number nineteen, this is the first in a series of discussion topics that should take us through these next four or five meetings, and then we will be done. Uh, the purpose of these conversations, they will be no longer than half an hour, I made that promise to everybody, uh I think we can have a good, robust um conversation, dialogue among council members. I'll be presenting to you what I believe, obviously, um is the best strategy for the development of downtown and Market Street, but I am not the guy that's in charge, you guys are, and so I want to make certain that um you have an opportunity to discuss all of the foundational um elements that should go into your vote when we do get to that vote, which are probably, as the calendar starts to play out, like it might happen in March on the sale of twenty-seven Market Street, or not. So um we're gonna start with, if you have um that PowerPoint, you guys all received that last week, and hopefully some of you have held on to that, uh Carrie will bring it up, I want to just get that in front of you, have just a couple of minutes of my explaining my thinking, and then let you guys um have a conversation as to whether or not uh this is um something that you subscribe to, I think it's extremely important to know how the council stands, where the council stands, on things that are uh going to be um a, a key, or rather key components in, in total, in your decision-making about twenty-seven Market Streets. So this first conversation, it says January seventh, because in fact, that's when this was scheduled for, but here we are. Let me tell you two, go ahead, Paul, are you miking me?
Yeah.
Are you just sitting there?
If you could even clip it right on you.
I, I can, although I'm not gonna be talking all that much, Paul, I don't think. Uh, so first of all, yeah, let me recognize Paul Kanye, King Kanye, uh he's here with Atsego Media, one of the things that I want to do is, and Corey from Atsego Media has um volunteered to the, to do this for us, provide a place on the web where people can see, the, our constituents can see all of these conversations as they are, as they develop over the course of these, you know, next four or five council meetings, so everyone has the benefit of the conversation that the council will have now. So, uh, so thank you to Atsego Media, thank you very much, Paul, and so this is about urban density, and you can move on to your next screen, it won't take very long, um the idea here, please, is that we, um, with everything that we do, we, I think we're, we have general consensus that we really do want to make sure we are tethered uh to our strategic plan and, and our comprehensive plan, but most specifically our strategic plan, which is uh something that we've all worked on and, and is most current, obviously. And if you could move to the next place. So what I want, what I, what I'll ask the council to do, please, in your discussion, is just to determine as best as you're able, um, the, the thought, do we pursue expansion of housing and commercial options within the downtown boundaries, does that make sense to do that? It may not make sense to do that, there are empty stores currently in the current uh infrastructure that we have, do we want to add more potential commercial spaces, is that a good thing or a bad thing, is a good thing or a bad thing to add more housing downtown, um does development of downtown and adjacent property benefit the city? It may be that some feel that it does not, and this is a conversation I'd like you guys to have, and we'll move on to our next. So um my pitch to you, what I believe is really um the driving um focus for me in our outreach um to a developer, was, as you have all, those who've been with me now these last three years have heard me incessantly um beating the drum about population, uh so in nineteen seventy, that census, our population was just over sixteen thousand, and then came the nineteen seventies, and we had urban renewal, everybody here is familiar with what urban renewal is, right? Is there anybody who's unclear about that? They, um, yes, Monica, you are.
No, I'm unclear.
Okay, uh, so um urban renewal um gave, um, it was a national, nationally funded movement in which um the blight of cities was um removed in favor of something that be more contemporary, in that moment's mind's eye, that was a little bit more of a, uh less of a city feel and a little bit more of a suburban feel, which is why when urban renewal is done, we lost all of Broad Street, we lost uh everything to speak of on the far side of Chestnut Street, uh and we lost any number of, of buildings on Market Street as well, um and when all was said and done, we lost over two thousand residents. You can make a case for, you know, Onyanta's decline started when, and there are a lot of various, lots of different reasons that the decline began, uh including the expansion of South Side, the um box stores, the, you know, that, that started to find themselves in competition to downtowns, um, just, just, there are a lot of different reasons that Onyanta lost population, but the reality of it is, two thousand residents is not the same as we had when we were a vibrant community. And so it may be hard for you guys to read this map, but you'll recognize certainly the streets, uh you can recognize Main Street, certainly, and if you, and you know Market Street, you see that there, that cross street, it's where the now Marx Hotel is, was Broad Street, and you can see the numbers of buildings that um lined Broad Street on either side, and the numbers of buildings that um populated, you know, the areas of the city that I just talked about, that are no longer there, um a significant change in the infrastructure of the city. So I talk, you know, people talk about Broad Street all the time, and, and it's hard to conjure, um, if you didn't live here at the time, what Broad Street was, this is Broad Street, this is Broad Street in the, looks like the very early seventies, um it was, there's a lot of buildings here, but in, not in the best of shape, but my point in looking at all of these um photographs is um the windows, if you look in the windows, you will see that there are curtains in the windows, there were people living there, and so these were not the most expensive places in the city of Onyanta by any stretch of the imagination, so the people who were living there were not rich, we also can make a pretty good case for those were the people that we displaced, let's move to the next picture, and just again, to give you a sense of the, the sheer number of buildings that no longer um exist in the city of Onyanta, I could show you dozens more pictures of building after building, but that gives you a sense of it, we can move to the next. So the impact of diminished housing density, so reducing engagement, basically, there are, there are fewer people who live, you know, connective to the street, there, you know, fewer people who live above the street, go downstairs or on the street, they're in your downtown, uh there's less energy, there's less activity, um in your downtown, the potential uh of staff and customers to be living next door is certainly diminished by the fact that there is no next door, um the population has been decreasing, as we are well aware of these last numbers of decades, Onyanta is not alone in that, it's a, it's a regional trend, but we are also a part of that regional trend, and when businesses um fail because they don't have the foot traffic that they need to, to survive and, and prosper, uh they close, there's less that's interesting about your town because your businesses have closed, uh less that's gonna want to, you know, bring you to that town is either a new resident or even somebody that you might want to retain as a resident. Obviously, the lack of um density has an impact in that it applies that much more pressure on the housing market, um the, those houses that do exist outside of the city, um outside of the center city, excuse me, um are, we have a student housing model, we have now in these last several years, a um, a um, the Cooperstown All-Star Village inspired economy, um and, you know, those stresses, along with the stresses that we have documented here for these many years, uh that we've been together uh around people being able to afford a place to live, they've graduated from school and where can they live, they have, they're not making eighty thousand dollars a year yet, where can they live and work at the Autumn Cafe or, or, you know, whatever that job might be that gets them in their twenties from here to there, uh very difficult for them to find a house in our downtown or close to our downtown. And then the last thing is this longing for the past, when you talk to people who've been around Onyanta for a length of time, they will wax, um, you know, poetic sometimes about how Onyanta used to be, before they tore everything down, you know, you, you hear that in the sixth ward, you know, before you tore it all down, it was great, you know? So there's this longing for the past, and there's a real lack of connection on a lot of people's parts for where we are, uh and so, you know, is recommitment to density an answer to uh that question that might be posed, let's move on. Uh, so looking at downtown density here, you're looking at uh total number of units uh in our downtown, um four hundred and twenty-nine, uh potential unrelated individuals that could be living in those units, fourteen hundred and change, and then you see, you know, just graphically, you, you can see that um we have a hole that, you know, was occupied by buildings, it's no longer, so the question is, should Market Street area be a target for planned growth? We'll go on more, and we'll leave this up on the screen, I think you guys probably have this still, this handout, um, these are, I'm, I'm using AI quite a bit lately, I'm trying not to get overly, um, you know, overly dependent upon it, but it has its value, and I'll give it credit when it's due, um, with the use of AI, I was able to come up with uh arguments both for urban density and against urban density. For us to move forward, knowing what we want to do with our sale of twenty-seven Market Street eventually, we need to know where the council is relative to um the idea of the pursuit of density, is this something that the council wants to do, thinks is important, or the opposite, and I'd like to just turn it over to you guys. Who's got a thought?
I got a thought.
Yes, Scott?
I think first of all, I think we have to have the discussion if we want to sell twenty-seven Market Street.
Say it again, please.
We have to have the discussion that we want to sell twenty-seven Market Street, just in general.
Yes, we'll get to that, yeah, well.
That's, we're not interested in that.
No, I, we will get, get to that, but it's also there, there's also forty-seven Market Street, and there's also, you know, other, you know, potential properties that our understanding of what we want to do downtown, I think, will inform some of that, go ahead, Katie.
Could we just put the initial questions back up so that we make sure that we're sort of.
Certainly.
Centering around those, please, thank you, thank you, Carrie.
Yes, Cecilia?
So I just may offer um just a little bit of background in terms of kind of dominant or more mainstream understanding of urban development in twenty twenty-five or the twenty-first century, it's really not a debate about density, so for example, that kind of main voice of urban design at the moment, which is Jeff Speck, would make the argument, and he's, you know, does pretty persuasive and compelling TED Talks on what urban design looks like, um and, and the sort of vision for urban design, and density is like number one in terms of attributes for a city that is viable. So to me, the question, you know, is, is a bit misguided, you know, it's not really about, is it pro or con, it's, you know, how do we increase this, how do we create this attribute in our city?
If, in fact, there are people, I know, um, as I've certainly talked to people who have a very different idea as to whether or not there should be buildings added to our downtown.
Yes, but we also, our council that's worked on a strategic plan that has some very key components that density fulfills. that has some very key components that density fulfills.
Sure. You don't hear me arguing the point, but again, this is.
So that would be my response.
Sure, sure. Further, yes?
Yeah, actually, I had pulled out strategic priorities as we were talking because it occurred to me that there's several that it touches based on like livable and well-planned development, creating and encouraging, reimagine communities that are well-planned with the goal of walkability, reduction in individual vehicular travel, walkability encompassed by safety and engaging community experience, thoughtful development, mixed-use consideration to increase connectivity. I'm just going to summarize some of them because there's a bunch. Like understanding that housing is a need that impacts all aspects of community health, implementing programs and policies to meet the pro-housing community objectives. And I know that we did get that certification. Encouraging more equitable, accessible and vibrant communities. And then going into like community inclusiveness. And we've got accessibility, affordability and equity is part of our values here. And also, you know, just looking at our recruitment and retention. I don't feel like I need to go into the weeds on that one, but you know, certainly, you know, it supports many areas, you know, of the strategic priorities that we've developed.
Is there, is there somebody that has a differing opinion on whether or not we should be pursuing development and the addition of infrastructure to our downtown?
Well, I think we need to listen to the, to the public, the general public that's going on about how much parking we need. We've done parking studies, we have a parking committee, a standing committee. We're waiting for the report to come back. I think that would have an influence on how I would vote on this. If we listen to the folks, they continually say they need more parking. If we listen to the business folks, the folks that live down there, they all want parking, community parking. They want as close as possible. So to Scott's point, whether we decide to sell our property or not, you know, we should be cognizant of the folks that are recognizing they want parking, closer parking as close as possible.
Couldn't agree more. And that'll be one of our little modules here. We'll be talking about parking and its potential impact on the development of downtown. Katie?
Yeah, so I, I don't think that the city should hold on to this parcel long term. But I agree that until we address some of our infrastructure needs with regard to accessibility and utilization of public transit, we don't have a plan from the parking task force of how we're going to manage parking to make downtown more accessible. I know, as a personal anecdote, that I threw a holiday party at Roots, a multi-generational holiday party, and the older folks didn't come because they were afraid they weren't going to be able to find parking and it was nighttime. And our city has an aging population, so we can talk about, you know, making our city walkable city all we want. But I remember before I was on council, talking to folks who live in my neighborhood, who are older, who said, you know, we live what would be considered a walkable distance, but it's not possible. We need that parking because we need to be able to drive just that much closer. So I think for me, until we address the infrastructure that makes it easier for who we have in our population to get downtown, taking away, you know, this, it just seems like we don't have all of, all of the information. And I agree that ultimately, like, that should not be a pit. Like, that's not what's, in my opinion, that's not what's best for our downtown long term, but I just don't think that we're there right now.
Right. And we're not, and I recognize that. And so in order to have as clean a connection to all of the things that we need to pull together for an informed opinion, we're going to have a very specific topic-driven conversation around parking. And, and so that will, before we get to a place where we are considering a vote on anything, the, the issues of parking, the issues of accessibility, all of those things will be part and parcel of a discussion that hopefully generates some consensus. Let me let you finish and then I'll go to Cecilia.
Which is that it's not just vehicular transportation. It's, you know, we have the, the Lenas Highway Project that's going to make it safer to walk and bike. I think we have a community that has a really strong biking, like, group, but I don't see a lot of people biking to and from work unless they are like bikers. I think we can address that with our youth. I mean, I just think there's a lot of growth that our community needs to do before we, we can't just say, don't rely on vehicular transport because that's not where we are, you know? I think we need to be where we are and then move from there.
But again, we will, we'll literally have a conversation about, that, that will inform. So that, I appreciate that. Go ahead, let me go to Ellen Lane first, please, and then Cecilia.
Just a quick one, because I'm noticing here and I'm also, you know, often noticed in public comments that this conversation is often posed as it's parking versus housing. And I just want to put up the idea that we don't need these two ideas to compete with each other. Like, we have a parking task force that's working on parking. We can work on housing at the same time, you know? It's not that we have to pick and choose one of those things. So with that in mind, we have a parking task force. That is moving in a direction. We are constantly, you know, we are often, you know, being called on to address the issue of homelessness. And the way to address that is through housing.
Cecilia?
It's a bit unrelated, more in response to Katie's observations. I think in 21st century US, you cannot have a conversation about removal of vehicular traffic or, or removing people from their cars. It's just not part of the conversation. So I would never even entertain that for our council. So what I would like to put forward is not a conversation about 27 Market Street. I don't actually think that's a compelling conversation for us to have. I think what the mayor's posing is a broader conversation about really our strategic plan and even the comprehensive plan in terms of how do we meet those goals? When you talk about growth, and I think that's a really key term for the city because it's certainly something that links what you just observed with what the mayor's been saying. We, we need to have a city in order to, and this is where Jeff Speck's work is so valuable because he comes into cities that are in decline, like as often the Main Street of O'Neanta is described. And he answers the question, how do we get a city to be viable again? How do we get a city to be a place where people want to go? And the answer, he has a series of answers, and one of them is increasing density. So it's beyond the conversation about transit even. It's about how do we get Main Street again to be a place where people are really excited to be?
And what I'd like to do.
And that's not, and that's not our conversation. That's a broader conversation that this particular paradigm in thinking about cities is asking. And it's a persuasive paradigm.
Right. So what I would like to do, to be as clarifying as I can be, is see if we can look at these small, small questions that are big questions in the, in the, in the, you know, scope and scheme of things. But these questions that are going to inform with the answers to other questions that we will, you know, get to in these next several weeks, a decision about what we want to do. This is not the time to talk about 27 Market Street. Couldn't agree more. This isn't the time even to talk about parking, really. This is the time I'd like you to be just considering what O'Neanta was in terms of its density. Is that something that we should try to replicate in these, you know, in these years to come? Should we be looking at trying to fill some of what is, never mind how we get there, but is it something that we would like to do? Is it something that the council thinks that that kind of a commitment to density is a smart move in terms of the direction the city should go? And, and that's really all I want this conversation to be about. Donna?
I agree, we should be more dense. And as I think you all know, I came from the densest place in North America before I moved here. So I'm all for density. What I think downtown needs is jobs. And if we have jobs and good-paying jobs, housing will follow through all the various economic costs. If I were, you know, I could wave a magic wand and get what I think is the right thing to, for downtown, I would say it needs a combination of office jobs that pay well. It would help the city if we had more manufacturing jobs. This was once a manufacturing and railroad town. And there's also the possibility of other kinds of jobs like warehousing and so on. And of course, retail and services. That is something that has not been happening. Three years ago, when Mark made a speech that really moved me in Mullen Plaza during his campaign for mayor, he said he wanted to bring a thousand people with jobs to O'Neanta and he was hoping most of them would be young. And that's a wonderful thing for this town, that we can do that. So far, it hasn't happened. So I think our focus should be on trying to recruit companies and they would bring jobs. And I would like to see high-paying jobs.
So again, what I'd like to do is just, if we can stay, I appreciate where you are with that. And that'll be a conversation that we will engage in as a council. But I want to really stay focused on this idea of, is this a direction that we want to take this city? Where we are looking at.
You talked about density and I said, yes.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Mike?
I, I agree, yes, to density, especially in underused parcels. I think O'Neanta is just barely big enough that we can think of multiple nodes of density. I mean, there's Main Street, but there's potentially, we could imagine, a second dense node. I don't know, somewhere out on Chestnut or something, you know, like. But then to move the conversation forward, what we need to think about then is to put more detail into what is in the comprehensive plan about, you know, how should that density happen? Where should it happen? And I mean, you can either take a map-based approach where you're saying, okay, these are the blocks that we want to increase density, or you take a sort of more, like, type of development approach. We need employment, we need housing, we need this. And I think until we can find ourselves in that, having that conversation, I don't know how we advance.
Yes, Cecilia?
Well, to follow up on Mike's point, I think the question isn't, you know, we don't have a motion here about density, right?
No, it's a conversation.
But I think the question has to be not density, yes or no. As I started my comments, I think it has to be, how do we create a Main Street where people want to go? What are the factors? And density is one of those factors.
But inferred is that density is one of those factors. It's not, it's not a debatable.
Exactly. So the question, I'm answering a different question.
Yes. Yeah, and that's, my, my sense of it is that this would be a meeting in which most of us would agree that a vibrant city is one that has population, right? And population needs a place to live and the consequence, the benefit of a population that is located in a, you know, more dense sort of a manner is that you are de facto going to have more energy on the street, which is going to be affecting obviously of businesses and potentially, you know, has an opportunity between the staffing and those other folks that are living there as potentially customers of creating opportunities for businesses. But Scott, did you have anything that you want to bring to it?
I just, I'm just trying to think on some stuff, but I was just wondering if anybody ever researched when they did urban renewal, if they had the same conversations in O'Neanta, like, you know, tearing us down, this is going to happen. If we do this, this is going to happen. Just in context, because like some, I feel like we're repeating history in a different way of trying to bring density back when they were fighting to get some stuff away. You know, I'm just.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right.
So, but I think we do have to look at housing, but my question is this. And I did not research this, I'm probably, but how do we bring density back to a small city when New York State is losing so much in the way of population? There's a factor that we can't deal with and that's New York State. We're not the New York State Legislature Body. And how do we compete? And I think that this is a broader question of what we're trying to do here.
It is a broad question. I want to go to Judy, if I could.
Just relative to the urban renewal, my understanding of that is they tore it all down with intention.
Excuse me, could you speak up a little bit so I could hear you?
Relative to the urban renewal question, my understanding of urban renewal at that time was they tore it all down and they had full intentions of replacing them with new. Take the old out, replace it with new and better. And then they didn't replace it with new and better for various reasons, most of which probably was money. But the intention was always to build back. And not focus on these vast empty spaces in your cities.
And the focus on car, on car culture and creating infrastructure for vehicles.
Yeah, malls, malls and things like that, yeah, in the cities.
Okay. Well, folks, it's been 30 minutes and I think this has been a nice discussion. I appreciate it. We'll look at individual, I know it flew, right? We'll look at individual topics as we move forward and hopefully we'll have a consensus that we have gotten enough of a baseline to have a conversation on 27 Market Street. Yes, Mike?
If you have a plan for coming weeks, do you, can you just tell us what your thoughts?
Yeah, let me, let me, um. I wanted to hear how this conversation went first before I committed to the, the next topics. And let me do that and then I'll send that out to all council. Yes.
I just wanted to make available actually some of Jeff Speck's TED Talks that are really worth.
I think that's a great idea, if you want to share those links.
Yes.
So again, I thank you very much, folks. And at this point, we'll move on to additional business and anything that there might be for council consideration. Do we have anything for councils? Yes. Oh, Lynn, who? Is it Lynn?
Yeah.
I, I just pointed out to Carrie, I don't know if you guys caught it, I think it was page 39 of our 94 pages, that the historic preservation is coming up with a fee of $100. Did you guys talk about that in finance?
I think so, probably. A hundred dollars to lie.
Yes, you did.
I don't know, and I guess we're going to talk about it next week, so.
So that, may I? Okay. So that particular ordinance is going to be, it's laid in your electronic packets that you received. It's going to be discussed at the next meeting, the first meeting in February. In the development of that ordinance, there was no section that allowed us to set the fee for the application. So we're adding language that allows us to set that fee.
In addition to what?
For landmarks and historic preservation. They have a certificate of appropriateness in the downtown historic districts. It is set lower than our other planning and zoning applications because it requires less administrative time and less, or less financial burden essentially on the city. So it is at a lower cost than any of our other planning and zoning fees. So, but in order for us to set the fee, it has to be enacted into the legislation. So it's being laid, it was laid upon distribution, but we're officially noting the laying date as today. It'll appear on the February 4th agenda for vote. It'll appear on the 18th for public hearing, at which point mayor has the option to sign or veto. And then our goal is, if it is passed and the mayor chooses to sign it, we'd like to have a motion available for that night to set the fee and the fee schedule.
Nicely done. Katie, you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to update everyone because I had a meeting with like 15 or so constituents on Saturday. And it was really great and there were a few suggestions that came from that that I thought were small and actionable and I wanted to just share them. And I'm happy to email them after this, but I just figured I'd bring them up. So one big thing, as you know, as everyone knows, the conversation centered around was communication. There were a couple of really good suggestions, I thought, from that. So one of the things that came up was having links on, potentially on eCode or on the website, that basically link to the YouTube to make it more friendly to like find the videos for a particular meeting. So it would say like, "Meeting of the common council, watch this meeting here." And it would go to the YouTube for that specific meeting. And then the other thing that was suggested was timestamps for agenda items. So like motion number one, I know, I know, I know. And I know, Andrew Down someone. So this is not like a command and it's not anything.
First one is easy enough to implement and I can do almost immediately moving forward.
Okay.
The second one.
Will require some work.
Yeah.
Yeah, some time, for sure. But I thought it was cool because for example.
The concept's amazing.
If somebody wanted to skip right to the discussion that we just had, it would say, like, it would have like a little bookmark and you could just click on it and it would take you to that instead of having to scroll.
So if may, my understanding in observing what other agencies are doing. So, if may, my understanding in observing what other agencies are doing is, I've seen one other agency that does it. Their meeting manager through Tyler integrates with YouTube and allows you to push a button. So, that might be another selling point for meeting manager and Tyler.
One point, for sure.
Just throwing that out there.
Okay, cool. The other thing was, and I think that we've done this to an extent, but just that there was a consensus that it, more investment in the audio and video and accessibility functions, closed captions, stuff like that, just so that, you know, I, I made a comment that like, "Oh, I'm sure you can always hear me." I was a cheerleader, and they were like, "No, actually, we couldn't hear you." So, and I know that I project, so, you know, we all know that there's issues there, but they felt like that was, you know, worthy because people would, people watch at home. So, I'm telling all of you of this, you know, if we're able to invest in that communication infrastructure, that that would be good. And then the third thing was with regard to the public safety report. Obviously, you know, people hear things from their neighbors or whatever, and so, I just thought that was a really nice way to kind of bridge the information gap. Whether that's something that is just a section that's included of the city administrator's report, the specific request was that, you know, they would come and talk to us about what's been going on in the city, how many calls they responded to, stuff like that, just so that we know. But I don't know, I don't know how possible that is. I'm just throwing it out because I thought it was a nice, nice idea. And then there were a couple of things with regard to public transit. We talked a lot about public transit, which is why I brought it up. One is to make the signs at the stops more prominent so that people know that it's a bus stop with the route. The other thing was to add, well, I kind of troubleshot it in my head, but was to put at the bus stops, some way that folks could, like a reminder, QR code or something to access the bus tracker at the stop so you could see where your bus is. And I was like, "We have a sign maker, maybe we could do that." So, and then also, they want, they wanted to talk about just the way that tickets and passes are issued, and if there were ways to make that more convenient, and then also accessibility restrictions that I'll forward on. But those were the things that I wanted to. And then the other thing was for me and for all of us around the dais, which is if you have a meeting, like I just had, just in terms of getting the word out more. I know we've used Nixle before, I don't do that always consistently. But the other thing too was like putting it on the city meeting calendar. I don't know if that's possible, but that way
We have the Google Calendar on the website, we can put it right on there.
Okay, yeah. But just to try to make it as, you know, promoted as possible. So, that was a note to self, but I'm going to share with all of you also.
And as things get posted to social media, which everybody, I think, does when they're having a board meeting or, you know, some, you know, some collection of folks, that, share it. I think we all, at one point or another, connect with social media, so if you see it, share it, please.
I mean, that's the thing, I, you know, the question was asked, like, "How do you promote these?" And I said, "Well, I have a Facebook group for people who are in my ward." And they were like, "What about people who aren't on Facebook?" And I was like, "Okay." I, it's the easiest way for me, but that doesn't make it the easiest way for everybody, you know? So, I, I agree to an extent that this was about sort of thinking outside a metaphorical box.
Scott?
Was that it?
That was it. Thank you so much.
Just real quick, just something I noticed is, in talking to people as well, like, is they always say we discuss the bad and the negative at a council meeting. And so, that's kind of what the, kind of what we have to do in doing business and stuff. So, we kind of, kind of get that. And the one thing I think we, we really need to praise more about, about this city, especially we want people to come here, is all the great stuff that we do have, street, you know? We got a lot to be proud of. I mean, we're one of the few to have a paid fire department, a paid police department. We have ambulance coverage, we have, you know, a city staff that bends over backwards for, you know, the residents. You just got to pick up the phone and call, and they will walk you through step by step on everything. You know, we have, I'd put our DPW crew against any DPW crew, and I think we'd win, hand down. Just, you know, and it's great to see the perkiness coming back in their steps and stuff with some decisions that we made. And I know up here, when we discuss stuff, sometimes it seems like we're not supporting staff. And that could, to me, is completely not what we're doing. We have to ask the questions that get asked of us from the public. We have to do everything we do out in public forum because that's kind of what the state law says we have to do. And I just want everybody to know that even if I might seem negative about something, I am, I have a lot to be thankful for for living in the city, and I'm proud to represent my ward and city. And I just think if we can maybe get the message out there that we have a lot going for us, and we just, we need, we need to preach this city to get people to come here and stay here, so.
Certainly. Anybody else have anything for council consideration? Okay. Is there any need for an executive? Yes, Katie?
Could we go into executive session to discuss a matter of employment of a particular person or persons? Please, so moved.
Seconded by Lynn.
All in favor?
I'll be quick.
And I presume the only
I need a, and
Great says
I need a vote from that side of the room.
Oh, oh, I said, I, sorry. Thank you.